Good evening.
Good evening.
So, if you're hot, can we apologize for that?
No, go ahead.
I'm not going to stand over by the door with it. That's where it's located. But we're here to talk a little bit about flood mitigation in terms of HUD funding. And so I have these notes I need to talk about, but I'm not going to really look at them. So it's just my notes. So what we're here to talk about is the federal grant from HUD and what we call the Community Development Block Grant mitigation.
Who are you?
And I am Steve Costello, thank you. I am the Harp Recovery Officer, Chief Recovery Officer.
I'm right here.
Do I need to talk louder?
Oh, yeah.
I know they don't use these things. So, yes, my name is Stephen Costello. I'm on the mayor's staff, I'm the Chief Recovery Officer for Harp. And prior to that, when I joined his staff, he would call me the Flood Zone. So I'm really a flooding and drainage person. And so what we're here today is to talk a little bit about the funding that we have from HUD for what we call flood mitigation associated with Harp. A little bit of history, back February of 2018, the federal government had allocated about $4.3 billion to the state of Texas for what they call flood mitigation to HUD, from HUD, to DLO, which is the state agency where all the money flows from. They also had a direct allocation to the city of Houston for $61 million. Now, what's happening right now is that the state is in the process of preparing what they call the State Action Plan for their $4.3 billion. And that plan will come out, we're hearing either Thursday or Friday this week, available for public comment about a 45-day period before it's actually submitted to HUD. We would encourage everyone to look at that plan on behalf of the city because we would like to maximize how much money we would get to the city. So we want y'all to look at that. But the purpose of this meeting is the first public hearing with the direct allocation that we got. And we have to prepare what is called a local action plan as well. So what we're going to discuss today is how, or what we would like to do, is spend the $61 million in direct allocation. And it's really an exchange. What we're going to do is we're going to highlight parts of our plan, what we have to address in the local action plan, which will be due in HUD sometime in March of next year. But we're going to ask your input on which we should be spending the money. So this is an exchange, it's really what it's all about down there. So we're going to have a short presentation by several people, one from housing, one from the Office of Emergency Management, then back to housing. And then there'll be some discussion groups to talk about what your thoughts on how we spend the money. A little bit of housing, and I want to introduce Congressman Ceci Narros, who is here today. Thank you, Councilor. Is there anyone else in here, elected officials? Yes, sir, representing Chiloacan's office? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Larry Freegan.
Larry Freegan. So, in the interest of time, and in fact, we're really, really hot, so I want to get going to a person here. You want to start for yourself?
Good evening. I want to introduce Mark Aliz.
I'm sorry. Buenas noches. Yo, Mark, I'm in Spanish. Muchas gracias. Para que se les dé el entérprete, que no aprenden si quieran en español. Si hablan si de té, por favor, al su mano. Muchas gracias.
Good evening. My name is Mary Itz. I'm the Principal Planner at the City of Houston's Housing and Community Development Department.
What?
As Steve mentioned, the city of Houston has been allocated $61 million of Community Development Block Grant mitigation funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Resulting from the disasters occurring in 2015, 2016, 2017, Congress appropriated mitigation funds to cities and states impacted by these disasters. This has resulted in a new HUD grant called CDVG Mit, CDVG mitigation. The city of Houston will receive CDVG MIT funds because the city received a direct allocation of CDVG disaster recovery funds from HUD for 2015 flood events, the Memorial Day flood and the Halloween flood. Unlike CDVG disaster recovery funds that were intended to address impacts from a particular disaster event, these mitigation funds don't have to tie back to one disaster event and instead are intended to reduce the risk of future disasters. To receive these funds, the city must submit an action plan to HUD by March 3rd. And thank you for being here tonight to help us gather information to develop our action In August, the rules for CDVG mitigation funding were published in the Federal Register notice. The state of Texas, as Steve mentioned, also received an allocation of CDVG MIT funds that we'll discuss a little bit in depth later in the presentation. Tonight is our first of two public hearings for this funding. Currently, we're developing the action plan. The draft action plan will be available for public comment for a 45-day public comment period in December. And after the public comment period, we'll incorporate the comments and finalize the plan to ask for city council approval and submit it to HUD before the March 3 deadline. CDVG mitigation funds have similar rules and align closely to other CDVG regulations. The mitigation funds must prioritize the protection of low and moderate income residents. HUD requires that at least 50% of the mitigation funds benefit low and moderate income people or neighborhoods. Also, HUD requires that a portion of the funds be spent in areas that HUD has identified as most impacted and distressed. The entire city of Houston is a mid-most impacted and distressed area. We're required to spend all the funds within 12 years and at least 50% of the funds within the, in the first six years. HUD has worked closely with FEMA to develop a definition for mitigation activities. HUD defines mitigation activities as those that increase resilience, reduce risk, and limit the impact of future disasters. Eligible activities include infrastructure, housing, economic development, and planning So, as we mentioned, to apply for these funds, we must submit an action plan to HUD. Unlike previous disaster recovery action plans that included unmet needs analysis, this action plan will include a risk-based mitigation needs assessment. The plan will also discuss local and regional planning and coordination of funds, and also have a budget and an overview of the programs that we'll spend the funding on. Melanie Baris from the Office of Emergency Management will now discuss the mitigation risk assessment.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, everyone. The Office of Emergency Management is pleased to be part of this public hearing. The mitigation plan, the City of Houston Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, serves the basis for the risk assessment that's being conducted for this effort, as it is required to be from the guidance from the HUD. And FEMA has worked with them on that. So we are collaborating with the housing department to make sure that our assessment is aligned with our past efforts and looking to the future. Our current and future hazards have been assessed in our existing plan, but we are, we have ranked them for the purposes of this effort. Obviously, flood is on top. Many of you are here for a discussion about flood. But we have also considered other hazards for this, for this risk assessment, including hurricane, extreme heat, wind. Also down toward the bottom, you'll see dam failure. Now, the dam failure itself as a risk is low. When we wrote this plan originally, it was in early 2017, so it was prior to Hurricane Harvey. And we are looking at this differently now. We're looking at dam-related risks instead of dam failures. Since we have seen that it's not necessarily dam failures, that that's our biggest concern when it comes to dams, is releases from those dams into our streams and impacting areas that may otherwise not be vulnerable to floods. So let's talk about flood risks, because that's the big reason that we are here today. Flooding is obviously the hazard to which Houston is most at risk, not just, not just Houston, but nationally. Nationally, flood risk is the highest-risk hazard. Flood risk is not static. You'll see on the maps around the room that there are flood insurance rate maps, those things we call the 100-year flood plane or the 500-year flood plane. This is a point in time. It's, it's, it's not something that we, we consider when it's, when we're looking at flood risk listing. It's a point in time, and flood risk is changing. It changes every day with every structure that's built, with every project that's even this team of them. Flood risk fluctuates, moves up and down, is different every single day. Flood insurance rate maps are one way to show risk, but it's not the only way to show risk. So we look at that for the purposes of flood insurance, but day-to-day, you'll see things like tropical storm Amelda, where 60% of the, of the homes that were, that were flooded were not in a map sort of way. So that's one way to account for risk, but it's certainly not the only way. We are looking and working with partners across the local, state, federal, nonprofit, private sector, and academic partners to, to build better flood risk assessments and maps and making sure that we're using the best data available. This map is an example of, of something called repetitive flood losses. This was produced by the Public Works Department. Repetitive flood losses are losses of a rolling 10-year period of $1,000 or greater, two or more times. So these, this, these heat maps, you'll see heat maps are, excuse me, hotspots in, in the Kingwood area, in Midwest, along Spring Ranch, down in Meyerland, and certainly in the area that we're in now. And this is, this was even pre-Hurvey. If we look at the data now, there will be hotspots in more areas of this area. So I don't want to necessarily dwell on the, on the flood risk maps themselves, those speak for themselves. If you want more information about these flood risk maps, you can go to the flood and recovery maps that are available here. You're welcome to bust out your cameras and go there. You can also Google them. But really, if you want to look at other, other data that's, that's more updated, you can look at, if you want one data, HoustonTX dot com heat maps has, for any given storm, you can look at what's flooding now. 311 folds into that.
Oh, and you have the preparedness guide.
I have.
Come on, all of a sudden. Jeez. So, and there's also MapNext. That's a Harris County-specific project, and they are looking to the future using high-resolution imagery to build out better flood. Maybe it was better when it was off.
That's good.
Can you give us? Yeah. Can you give us the, the information that you just shared a moment ago with the, the various places that we would be able to go as an alternative right quick? Because we could barely hear you.
You couldn't hear me?
Yeah.
My apologies, I thought this was a long one. The, so the flood insurance rate maps, Harris County, Montgomery County, and Fort Bend County, those portions of Houston are in all three. If you want to take a picture, it's probably the best way to look at that. But the 311 data, there's the call data that's coming in from 311 about the flood reports, that's available in almost a real-time basis as that information is fed into the system. And those heat maps are available, and I can't remember, Marty, you might be able to speak to this, but it's on a 24-hour basis, and then it looks for like a 10-day period. There's different time periods that you can look back at, at what those calls were about the 311 data and flood reports. So for a given, for a given event, that's, that's a good place to see what's flooding now. Also, storm maps and the high-water locations on there, they have good data, real-time, about what's flooding. So you can't just look at, at where your flood risk is on these, on these flood maps. Again, it's a point in time, it's static data, and flood, flood risk is rolling. So, as I said, flood risk is changing. Atlas 14 data, which, that might not mean anything to you, but basically, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association is doing lots of assessments on, on what is it that we're seeing? We're seeing changes in our, in our weather patterns and our storm risk. So, the 1% annual chance rain call event, this is for, again, for a 24-hour period, has risen from 12.7 inches in that 24-hour period to 17 inches. And then for, for a, I think it's for the 10-year, or interval, well, that's somewhere around eight inches. So this is significant. This is a significant change, and it's our new normal. And so that's something we consider in our future planning as well. So we're moving on to hurricane. Now, a lot of times in Houston, those, those risks span together, but certainly flood is still a risk with hurricanes. But we also add storm surge, which creates some, some different, unique challenges in some of our coastal areas. And, and wind risk, flash flooding and river flooding. And then also, as you look at this map, most of these areas that are vulnerable to storm surge is also our port area. And hazardous materials incidents are concerning that area too. Sea level rise, so now, again, exacerbating the flood risk. We have, in the next 80 years, we could see up to 7.28 feet of sea level rise. It won't be as significant, obviously, as it would on the coast, but because we have inlets to the coast, that will backflow. And we have, we have seen some of the reaches interior to Houston getting up in some of the modeling rivers. So it's something to consider as we develop infrastructure plans and mitigation plans in the future and to ensure that we're not just addressing current risk, but future risk. Vulnerability is concerned. So part of the risk formula is to consider not just the hazard and not just the consequences, but vulnerability. And so we're looking at socioeconomic status, ethnicity and language issues, we're looking at housing and transportation access, and whether or not individuals with disabilities are vulnerable. These impact vulnerability. And this is an overall composite view of vulnerability. So one of the things that we're required to do is to assess the risk on these lifelines. So FEMA defines these in a very specific way, and HUD has asked us to apply that. So as we look at the hazards, the hazard analysis of reporting, hurricane, dam-related risks, sea level rise, and other hazards, we're combining that with the consequence analysis, and then the vulnerability assessment. This is sad. And tying that into the risk game and assessing all of that together. So we're using this whole composite to build that, that document to support the action plan, for the mitigation assessment.
So, as we mentioned earlier in the presentation, just like the city of Houston is receiving mitigation funds, the state of Texas is also receiving mitigation funds. They're receiving it not only for 2015 flood events like we are, but also for 2016 and 2017, including Hurricane Harvey flood events. So they will receive $4.3 billion worth of mitigation funds for the whole state of Texas to determine mitigation activities. The city of Houston could be eligible to receive some of this funding. We won't know what, what it will be to apply for this funding until after the action plan, the state's action plan is out, published for public comment. We expect the action plan, the state's action plan, to be out for public comment for 45 days like ours, between now and December 1st. So by December 1st, the state's action plan will be out for public comment. Please go and, and look and, and comment. The city of Houston has been working with Harris County closely, Harris County Engineering, Harris County Flood Control, Harris County Community Services, to align different mitigation flood projects. So we have asked the Texas General Land Office, who is the administrator of the Texas mitigation funds, to allow us to add our several different watersheds, work of projects into their action plan. So we will continue to work with the Texas General Land Office and Harris County to try to bring some of those dollars to Houston. Now, we're going to break out into discussion groups. We, we have heard a lot from the public regarding mitigation, regarding flood loss in the past. Last year, or last summer, we did our local action plan for Hurricane Harvey that was later put in with the state's action plan for Hurricane Harvey disaster recovery funds. And we did a survey, and from this survey, we heard that the greatest risk, the greatest concern of Houstonians was flood risk. And to mitigate against those risks, to create drainage projects, to improve infrastructure. So tonight, we're going to ask you about the risks that concern you the most and about the priorities that you have in your communities. So we'll have, we'll have a note taken, as well as a person to direct the discussion. So if y'all will, if you're at a table or two, if you would join another table, and we'll have our employees come around and ask you some questions. After that, we'll reconvene and do a public hearing portion. If you signed up or did not sign up for a public hearing to make a comment, a three-minute comment, you can sign up where you signed in. And we look forward to bringing what y'all say.
I'd like to apologize also for the heat. We've asked the building folks if they could do something about it. Apparently, they are unable to control the heat in this room from this location. So we apologize, we understand that it's very warm in here, so.
We'll have Danielle, where the other mic works, we'll have Danielle hand off the mics to each of the different people. And each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. As part of that process, we do have some indicators along the way, let you know when you have about a minute left and about 30 seconds left. We're trying to keep it at three minutes where possible to get everybody in tonight. If you have additional public comment beyond speaking, or if you choose not to provide a public comment while speaking tonight, there are also these forms on your, on your table where you can submit a written comment, and we'll take those as well. Just to be clear, this isn't necessarily a question-and-answer session. If we can answer immediately in the moment, we will. We have a lot of experts in this room, from the housing department, from OEM, from Public Works, from the mayor's office that can help out. So even in the moment, we're not responding to you. We may speak with you right after the public hearing portion so that we can choose to have a response, some type of help, or whatever you may need. So we're going to go ahead and get moving on to our list of names. And if you didn't check yes, and you kind of get through this, and you decide that you want to do a public comment, you didn't indicate that when you came in, we'll kind of do a last call at the end to make sure everybody that wants to speak has time to speak. So first up on the list, we have Maria Davila.
Hi, my name is Maria Davila, and I live in District C. It is called Woodcrest subdivision in Rice Military. There's a small group of us in our neighborhood that have been trying since 2015, maybe 2014, to try to get help in mitigating flood. We've been, we've done everything from planning to even drawing out the design, the scope of the work, providing the overdogs, we've even provided it to Mr. Costello. We haven't had any success. So it's unfortunate that I feel exhausted begging for help for our entire neighborhood. So it impacts not just me, this is not, I'm not here just for me, I'm here for several of our neighbors who have been impacted so much and so many times. And, you know, they've tried helping us for a small portion by digging ditches a little deeper, you know, but again, nothing, nothing has worked. So we've actually done all the homework for the neighborhood, you know, for the city of Houston, as I said, drawn out the plan. I don't know what else to ask for. So I'll do whatever it takes to get help for us. I've tried begging, pleading, harassed Ellen Cohen's office. You know, the only thing I don't do is drive by her house, stand on her porch, but if that's what people say it needs to happen, I'm willing to do it. So, as I said, several of my neighbors have been impacted so many times. And there's days that I can't even get to my house or out of my house simply because at any rain event, we're impacted. It doesn't matter if it rains one inch, two inches, 10 inches, we can't even leave the house or come home.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Carol Brown?
I just wanted to tell you that I've been impacted by four floods. First, I was in a flood zone. Now, they put me in a repetitive flood zone. It made my insurance go up so high. So since Amelda has come, when my insurance comes next, I'm a door open, even hiding. I don't know what to do. There's a bio behind my house called House Bio. People put all kinds of things in that bio, and it impacts all of us. This time, it even impacted Ripper. And when you see this water, it's been spilling. The water comes to my ground. And when you look across the street, they even closed down MEL this time, the police closed down MEL Street. You couldn't get down under the way. When you look across my street, it looks like a lake. That's how it looks. The street looks like a lake. So I don't know what else to do. I don't know what else to do. I don't know what else to say. It's just that now, I'm in this repetitive flood zone.
It's time to go.
So, I think probably some of the comments that I want to make are comments that you've probably heard from many of the tables. One of the things that's important is the flooding that we're seeing in this neighborhood really, really became more aggressive after all this aggressive development started happening. And part of that, for me, being in a historic community, is it works against us, number one. Number one, the permitting system that we have needs, needs to be revised. When they fix homes, no matter how much home repair money you have, if there's a certain amount over, then they don't issue a permit. So Ms. Furlough's house over here, historic, we can't fix it. She's just got to stay in that house, just like that. Next door to her, they were allowed permit to pour a slab in a flood zone and flood her.
For the new condos that's there.
For the new condos. And so we do need to look at the system that allows for permits to people. And they're continually flooding the neighborhood. That's one. The second thing is federal dollars coming to a neighborhood to help undeserved, uninsured, and underrepresented people. They get the information from our community, and then the money never returns to the community. It goes to areas on the other side of town. Now, Ms. Karen Stewie has told you about her house. Every flood, I've been there with her, and her whole street. I drove down the street yesterday, there's a new house going up on a slab in a flood So we need to rethink equity in how we build neighborhoods, how we include neighborhoods, and how we view neighborhoods from the outside and stop making decisions for our neighborhoods without us at the table.
Roger Butler?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, I wasn't planning on speaking, I'm very happy to be here.
Uh, Rodrick Butler?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, I wasn't planning on speaking, I'm very happy to be here. I've been here before, and I'm always thankful that this school lets us have the space to have a public discourse. Here's my concern. The city of Houston doesn't have a comprehensive flood plan. So when emergencies happen, they do things, but there's no script. We've had multiple major ca- almost catastrophic events. This city is built on a swamp. We flood, we get it. But the city and the county both need to have comprehensive flood plans that join together and match up. The city and the county also need, I believe, once a quarter, and they say, and they talk, and staff says, we meet and we work very well together. But the city and the county needs to meet at least once a quarter to put politics aside and go in a room and say, county, you have all of this equipment, you have all of this money. And the city goes, we have all of these projects. And they need to set aside the politics, even though we had a discussion that that's going to be difficult, to do what's in the best interest of the people, because if they don't, this is an all hands on deck situation. If they don't, two things will happen. You will lose property, and most people here, that's one of your most, largest investments is your property. But you will also lose lives. And nobody here wants to be the person that they write the story about. And nobody wants to get a phone call about someone losing their life because they were caught in floodwaters. So this is an all hands on deck situation, and we need to treat it like that. So, a comprehensive plan will work. The city and the county doing more things, but they also got to tell the people that aren't their residents. We're sitting here, and people start telling us things, and we go, if we didn't attend this meeting, if I didn't have a council member that I saw at my regular civic club meeting that told me what they were doing, I'd have to see it in the paper, or I'd have to find out after the fact.
What neighborhood, who'd you from?
Northeast Houston, Seneca.
All right. Yeah.
I ran as a city council candidate, so on all these issues, I got thousands of questions on what you would do. And I sat in meetings like this, and there are meetings that you guys don't even know, that people sit in and make decisions for you. That's the way it is, and I get it. But what I don't get is that the last thing we said as we were sitting at our table was that people need to at least provide you the information so you guys, the citizens, can make a decision. So, the last thing I asked for was, they need to show up to civic clubs, super neighborhoods, and to the guy that lived in your neighborhood for thirty years, and ask him, where does it flood? And find the ten worst neighborhoods and start there.
Amen.
Take care.
Hey, Dr. Nira Darvish, yes. I had someone come up to me and say, who's either the one that could help this widow? If I cry, forgive me, I'm really very sentimental about the situation. So, I met this widow and her friend, and, um, she had a cane, was a Christian savior, spouse survived concentration camp, saved, was a war hero who saved people in the Gulf of Hitler. But she was a widow in the northwest with no living family members when the dam was released too fast. It was not a flood zone. Somebody told me to go to her place because she was really in trouble. And I cannot erase the image of going to her place. When I walked up, I walked up, I saw six-foot watermarks still on the house. She was not in a flood zone. I think they need to change the assessment to include dam release incorrectly, so it never happens again. They tried to do class action laws to the neighborhood, but that didn't do anything for them, but sent them off to false hope. So I've been understanding, well, God, what do you want me to do? So I tried to follow the system, what happened? How did she fall through the cracks? She's a widow, she looks like she's definitely ill. She has no surviving family members to help her out, and she's on a fixed income. So what I found out is that the people of the city are really fantastic, but she just fell through the cracks because she was honest. She said, the question said, are you renting or do you own a home? And she said, I'm renting, because on her fixed income, she had to rent because her home was also being paid for as own. Because she was honest. And she called all these people, and couldn't get a live person, and her friends couldn't get a live person, not from the city, not from the church, not because we don't have great people helping, we have great people helping. She just fell through the cracks. So when I went to see her, I was like a nightmare scene. Got in home, filth inside, furniture piled up, tons of mold, and that's why she's sick. She had a choice between being homeless or toxic mold syndrome. And so thank you to the people that have taken her from the bottom priority towards the top priority, and are going to go in and do her risk assessment. But how many other widows are hurting like this? Like, we shouldn't have that happen. We have compassion, they just fell through the cracks. And I hope that somehow us stepping up as leaders of the community can make a difference, because we will. All these people on this table from my business network volunteered to go meet her, and we are now putting her back in the system. And we had a private person, a private investor save her home. So she is no longer going to be homeless, she's a success story. The next thing is she's going to get an assessment for toxic mold and health, her health condition, because it would have taken forty hours of cleaning out that house that she was stuck in for her not to be ill today. For thirty days she's been sick because we couldn't get her to the job we got for her, because nobody cleaned that place, and she didn't know. So thank you for your time, and I hope we can help people like this.
Danny Asprey?
Hey, guys, good afternoon. Okay, so, um, just some suggestions, uh, just for me. Um, I think, just like we were saying at the table, the city of Houston needs to build according to nature. There are several different agricultural organizations that we know of that can help us with that situation. Also, I believe that areas that are hit hardest, the city should kind of get with, uh, the credit bureaus that are out there too, and, uh, come up with a point system that they can help us with when things are happening. Communicate with TransUnion, Equifax, and all these other people, uh, that control our credit, because things can happen, you know, during disasters and things like that. Also, I think that, uh, with the permitting process that's happening, I think that if the city of Houston can extend its arm and give authority to working super neighborhood organizations to pass permits, I think that would help a lot of the situation. Because the city of Houston is so huge, it seems as though sometimes the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing.
That's right.
So if you have people within the area who know the area and have the best, and have a proven record of having the best intention for the area, right because they live there, then give them the power to permit. So that way, it will curtail a lot of the gentrification, a lot of the, uh, poorly built homes that contribute to the loss of life. And also, do more enforcement on, uh, illegal dumping and things like that. We team up with a agricultural, uh, organization. I've, I've heard of one that says that it can plant, uh, things on top of the garbage and eat the garbage. But you never know that because they're not invited to these meetings. So, that's it for me, thank you so much.
Rosalind Jackson?
I'm on Rob. Good evening. Uh, my name is Rosalind Jackson. Hey, there you are. Can you?
Talk louder.
Can y'all hear me now? Yeah. My name is Rosalind Jackson, and I live at four three fourth Union. And that table back there, we all live on the same street around the corner, one of the lanes. And we keep experiencing this floodwater. We're in our house right now repairing our house, and I'm just sick of it, I'm tired. Just tired of tanning my walls up. I'm tired of going to see this water coming, I'm tired of hearing the rain, you know, I'm tired of it. And then, I'm just tired. And I'm tired of going to see water coming up in my yard, I got to run and get my furniture and clean it up and put the shadows up because I'm scared. I live behind the bio, and I wish I would fix this stuff, elevate our home like y'all did because I had a marriage, and the rain is coming down, and it wasn't there too. I'm just tired. And I came here because I just want to voice my opinion, because I'm just tired. I'm in my house right now, I'm repairing my house right now because of the death. And I'm just tired, I'm, I'm, I'm just tired of going home every day, and I got to do this, I'm just tired. This is the second time, mom is in court, we had to tear house, I had to shut the house, now I'm doing it again, I'm just tired.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I don't know if this is working.
Hi, Ross.
Okay, I'll try to project, hopefully you can hear me.
Great.
Uh, thank you all for the opportunity to give, uh, my feedback and, uh, capture, capture that in this public hearing. And just have a couple of things to say. I'm a neighbor of Maria's. Um, in the past five years, we flooded four times, and, uh, when I heard Ms. Rosalind speaking, I, I sort of felt the same way, and, uh, anytime it rains, uh, I sort of wonder, is water going to get into my house this time?
Exactly.
Um, so, we're not in a floodplain. Um, we know that drainage is the, is a key issue in our area. Um, the city's even come up with a couple of plans, it seems like, to, to address it, but nothing's been done.
There you go.
So, um, yeah, I, I just, again, wanted to sort of air the, air the grievance. I think that many of us have, uh, have been suffering for the past few years, and, uh, hopefully, like some of the other projects that have been, uh, requested, or attention that has been requested here this evening, that, uh, our area will be considered as well for this one. So thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Where you from, what neighborhood? Woodcrest?
Katie Herbert?
Uh, my name's Katie Herbert, is this working? No. Okay, um, okay. I, um, I purchased a renovated home, uh, just a small two-bedroom, or I'm sorry, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, that had been renovated in District D in the South Union neighborhood. So I'm off of Cullen, just inside the loop between Yellowstone and Cullen, or I'm sorry, between Yellowstone and, and South Union. Um, so luckily, that area does not flood, that was one thing. When I purchased my first home, I really wanted to be in an area that I was going to feel safe, not flooding. When I moved into my home a month later, that July, I thought my house was going to flood. It rained so hard, that was last year in July, we had a storm. And the drainage was the issue. It's not because I'm in a flood area, it's because the culverts were completely blocked, seventy percent blockage. So, I was fortunate enough that we had a drainage program or a drainage project over the summer. I have been calling 311 every month, working with Dwight Boykin's office, his chief of staff knows me by first name now. So, the issue that we had in my neighborhood with this project, and I'd like to give feedback to everyone who's going to work on a drainage project. The project management was very lacking. So, this plan was created five years ago from what I understood. No one came back to reevaluate or look at complaints about the current drainage issues when they started the project. So, even though I had been calling for months and months about this, they came out, and there was a section seventy percent blocked that was causing my area on my side of the street to not drain at all, to the point where every room in my house now has cracked drywalls that was just replaced a year and a half ago. They did not have that section that was seventy percent blocked in the plans to replace it. I had to fight with project managers, city inspectors, the company that was contracted to do the work, the foreman on the job called 311, it was a mess. There has to be a better way to manage these projects and reevaluate them at the start of the project. Not only that, but to let the residents know that a project is beginning. The only sign that was posted in my neighborhood was posted on Yellowstone, facing Yellowstone, east of Calhoun. So the only time you were going to see it is if you came from MLK on Yellowstone and turned your head. No one in my neighborhood knew about what was going on. In one of the other neighborhoods, I don't know what's going on. Some residents in another neighborhood north of Yellowstone had similar frustrations with the fact that no one was notified that a project was starting. So, you're talking about neighborhoods that have open ditches and no sidewalks for low-income people who don't necessarily have a vehicle and already are walking on the edge of the street. So, in digging the ditches, they're digging them deeper and in a V shape. I understand the water has to go somewhere, but now, that little strip that was there for someone to walk on the side of the asphalt is no longer there, which is creating safety hazards, and it's impossible to maintain. So, I do my own yard work, I'm thirty-one years old. I have a very hard time leading my own ditch, it's impossible. The angle is way too steep. I have elderly neighbors who cannot do their yard work, but we as the homeowners are responsible for maintaining the ditches. So, when we go to make these plans for future projects, there has to be some kind of way to find a better solution to make things less hazardous for the homeowners and the residents of the neighborhood. That is my biggest issue there. Aside from that, the inconsistencies that we found, my driveway is concrete, it was replaced with asphalt, that was another fight I had to have. We had sections that were previously in open ditch that were replaced with drain breaks and paved over, so now there's parking on that side of the street, but it wasn't consistent, it was just in certain spots. And trying to get things fixed and replaced, once they started this project, was a nightmare. Not only that, but the section that was seventy percent blocked, they took that out. And instead of taking out the rest under the cross street there so that it could drain completely to Cullen, they left it there because I didn't complain about that under the street. So, it's really not completely draining. They put down sod in my ditch, which was full of water, and I had to smell it rotting until I complained even more. So even the job foremans are not paying attention to what's going on. There has to be more project management on these things. So when we have all these millions of dollars, this needs to be really managed to make sure that this is being spit properly. Because we're doing ourselves a disservice by making a plan now, and then in 2025, assuming that this neighborhood looks exactly like it did right now. So, that's all I have.
Fanny Haynes?
She met.
Kiriyati Exodus?
Kiriaki Exodus.
I'll try to talk louder. Don't forget to hear me. So, I'm a neighbor of Philip and Maria's as well in the Woodcrest neighborhood. We constantly have flooding in our homes and our streets. The water goes nowhere. Our, like, couple little blocks around us, like this little choke point of water that has nowhere to flow. We get water from the train tracks and receive all of the water from, like, the Greater Woodcrest and Rice Military Neighborhoods. It all just comes down to our couple little blocks along the cone. Some work was done along the cone, but this didn't alleviate any of the flooding. I still had water in my living room a couple of months ago during Emelda. And our particular street hammond, actually, nothing was even done on our street at the cone intersection. And during Emelda, I'm outside on the street, and I have water to my knees in front of my house. Yet the opposite side of my block, same block, just at the end of it, you can see the street's completely dry there. But it all just chokes down to our little corner, and the water doesn't continue to flow anywhere from there. It just ends up in our living rooms. And we're constantly reporting to 311. I've been on the news several times. We marinated Ellen Cullen, and we, like, tried so much, and we just keep getting overlooked. And absolutely nothing's getting done. I don't know what more to do. Thank you.
Cynthia Scott?
Oh, get me up, girl. You should've told me earlier.
I want to thank you to all of you who have already spoken because a lot of what I'm concerned about has already been addressed. We talked about the infrastructure and all of that. We were talking about the flooding that goes on in the neighborhood and those kinds of things. The gentleman that spoke about meetings being held and conducted and the neighbors not knowing anything about it, my hat goes, my hat tipped my hat, children, because that is happening. A lot of these meetings are going on, and we know nothing about them until I happened to find out about this one today. That's why, you know, I like to look cute all the time. But I found out about this meeting today. And I was this evening, this afternoon, and I said, "I don't care what I look like. I gotta go." Because the flooding situation has gotten to a point where it is totally unacceptable, and there is no reason that we, the taxpayers, that support this city the way that we do, because they're gonna get your tax, we gonna pay taxes, that we should have to endure the kinds of, the kind of flooding that we get having. I have flooded three times. My next-door neighbor has flooded four. The only reason I didn't flood the last time for Emelda the other week, that one, was because I happened to have been home, and I was able to keep the water out. You know, it filled up the garage or whatever that case may be. But the infrastructure there are things already in place. And we were talking about it at the table we were sitting, about using that hot program to elevate some of these homes that need to be elevated.
That's right.
If those streets need to be drained, the drainage system is bad. It needs to be repaired. And our civic association is now working hand-in-hand with the city. They have been, now, everybody, when they were trying to get elected these last few months, have been coming to all of our city association meetings, introducing themselves or whatever. And my only response to them was, "Fine, but if I vote for you, I'm gonna hold you accountable for what you're saying to me you're going to do." And I think we, as the citizens of this city, need to hold those whom we vote into office to represent us. We need to make certain that they are representing us. There's no reason your home should flood as often as it does. No reason mine should flood. I'm an old lady now, and I can handle a lot of this stuff that every time it floods, we gotta sit there. My neighbor's sitting right here, and I don't mean anything against you. Her house stinks, right on that corner. Because this is the fourth time that water has gone into her home. And nobody's there to help to get it out. When we get old, nobody's gonna come help you clean out your house and get your furniture up and all of that kind of stuff. You get the one room cleaned out, and you got six or seven more that are all wet. So, we need to look at making certain that we hold those whom we elect accountable for. We need to be more aware. The neighborhood association, the, what do you call it? You, baby girl, neighborhood's work. The super neighborhoods' work. And the gentleman that was talking about giving them more information and the power to help us, that would work just fine because they're in the community. They know what's going on in the community. And that information needs to be taken and given to the city and the county. Our last association meeting, we stressed that it's time for the county and the city to stop passing the buck and start working together. I heard a gentleman say a moment ago about how they need to work together. It's gonna have to happen because when we were annexed in 1980, all of the city, the city annexed us, but not all of our services. So, now, we're still fighting over what portion is for the, what part does the county handle and what part does the city handle? They need to both come to the table together, and we all can sit down and draw out, get a plan together to get these problems taken care of. The problem would not have been there had we had those in power, who with the power, had done what they were supposed to do in the first place. But since I don't have time to point my finger because I want it fixed, we just need to get together, the communities get together. Don't stop fighting. Get, there is a way to fight. Get together, get your game plan together, and present it in a respectable manner and hold these people's feet to the fight. Yours is precious, but we did.
Appreciate it.
Willa Rhonar Classer?
Uh, Dr. Rosalind Francis?
I couldn't look at my paper. I couldn't put my eyes. You don't need no mic, baby. Just talk. We can hear you. Go ahead and talk. Just talk, huh? Well, she's been listening, but she's going over her head. Okay. The clock is ticking. It's on.
Hi, my name is Dr. Francis. I am from City Gas, born and raised. I am appalled, and I'm just disappointed in the city of Houston. Why? Because my community has been flooded over thirty-five years.
Years, yes, ma'am.
Years, years and years. I am disappointed in how we have been treated in City Gas. Okay? I'm so disappointed. My dad's lungs collapsed two years ago because of the hurricane, because of the flood, because of the mold that was invested in the home there. So, I am appalled of how the city of Houston has treated City Gas, a community of color. We are in need of drainage, a new drainage system. We are in need. We are in need of so many things that we need in our community. We are in need. What would it take for the city of Houston to actually fix our infrastructure? What would it take? A community of color, of people. We have always been discriminated. For what reasons, we have no idea. So, today, tonight, I'm here to say that we need your help, the city of Houston. We need our infrastructure fixed. We need our drainage. We need those things fixed. What would it take for you guys to help us in our community? What would be the concerns or the issue? What plans or actions do you have for us to sit down as a community and work these plans together? We're tired. We're tired of being the underdogs. We are tired of this. And so, if we can come together as a community, as a community, as a whole, we can make so many things possible. So, that's my mission for our community tonight. I would love for us to work together as a community so therefore we'll be able to uplet our infrastructure, we'll be able to have our kids have nice bike lines to ride back and forth home to school. We need these things in our community. And so, if you'll be able to help us, we'll be more than happy. So, come with us, you guys, as well.
So, that's all of our speakers that signed up to speak. Is there anybody additionally? And please speak your name before you apply comments.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Letitia Grant. I'm First Vice President of Agri's Home Super Neighbordhood. And what I wanted to do was share with everyone something that we found out in our roundtable. Our community, if you're not familiar with Agri's Home, we have a large population of seniors. And there is a survey, if you were affected by Emelda. We were unaware of it, but we're gonna have to help some of our seniors fill this out. And where do you find that? That survey is at recovery.houstontx.gov. And I'll repeat it again. I'll repeat it again. And if you know someone or if you were affected by Emelda, this survey is going to be used to help determine the areas that were most affected according to the individual that was sitting at our table. But it's important that you fill it out. And if others in your community do not have access to the internet, maybe you can share that with them this week.
Would anybody else like to speak this evening? Y'all in one? Twice? All right. Before we wrap up, I first want to thank all of you for coming out on a Tuesday night to hang out with us from seven to nine. As mentioned before, we're gonna be putting our action plan up shortly. We're developing it. This was a major part of that process. We'll be holding another public hearing. We're taking this time event in January. But we'll be putting out more info on all of that so that you guys are aware of it. I want to thank all the staff from the city for coming out and helping with this. Can you get a minute? Can you get a minute, stop by and see them? We'll be hanging out for a little bit longer. So, give me questions, if there's anything we can do to help right now. Let's have those conversations. You guys have a good, safe evening.